This is a special study session, City of Emeryville City Council. And I'm going to save the pledge of allegiance for the regular meeting. Please note, we are all still here. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment on this study session? The topic of which is the development of Doyle Street Mews. And I'll have the opportunity for public comment after the staff presentation as well. Okay, seeing none. We have Navarro Oaks to present, please.
Good evening, Council. So this study session, as you said, is for the Doyle Street Mews project at 5876 and 5880 Doyle Street. For those who are not familiar with this, this is located between 59th Street to the north and Powell Street to the south. And the project site is indicated by a red square here on your screen. For background, the application was submitted for this project in March of 2016. It requires a conditional use permit for six new residential units. The conditional use permits are required for having residential units over 20 per acre, over .5 FAR, and the demolition of existing residential units. Major design review is required for the six new units. And city council approval is required to demolish the four existing residential units onsite, which is why we are here tonight for the study session. For continuing background, Planning Commission study session, the first time, was held in April of 2016. There was general support for the project concept. There were concerns at that point for bonus points that were required. The applicant was suggesting using zero net energy. And the proposal brought up a lot of questions about if it was truly a zero net energy project, how feasible it was for the site. The commission also provided design feedback. Several neighbors spoke or provided letters. Neighbors to the east were concerned about the project's height and potential impact to their garden and juniper trees. A current resident also spoke in favor of the project. And neighbors to the north discussed potential impacts to the redwood trees adjacent to the property line. Again, this project went to the Planning Commission for a second study session in August of 2016. The bonus point proposal was changed in response to the previous concerns. And this time, the applicant was proposing to contribute to the citywide fund to support small local serving businesses. A tree assessment was also provided to address the concerns about the trees. And the commission was supportive of the new bonus proposal and also concerned about the impacts, the potential impacts to the redwood trees. They also provided design feedback and are concerned about the project height at that point as design. So changes from that last Planning Commission meeting. The building materials and colors have changed. There was previously proposed rooftop decks in response to the concerns about building height. Those have been removed from this proposal. The applicant has also removed one guest parking space to provide more landscaping and common open space. And the two easternmost units have been redesigned. There's no longer ground floor parking on those rear two units. They're also three-bedroom units now instead of two-bedroom units. And the third floor has been reduced in size to provide for an east-facing deck stepping down the building towards the rear of the property. So for the project description, it's to demolish all the existing buildings on the property, build two new buildings, each with three residential units, three stories tall, and stepping down in the back, three-bedroom units for each of those six units, one parking space per unit, and bicycle parking space in each unit, and then two additional guest parking spaces for bicycles. For the general plan and zoning, this is a mixed-use residential land use classification under the general plan and also under the zoning. A mix of use is not required, however, because the site is less than one acre. It's also in the north hollows overlay zone, which impacts setbacks. And the transit hub overlay touches a property, but there's no parking reduction because it doesn't actually cover the majority of the property. For floor area ratio, as I said, the base is 0.5, but you can get up to 1.0 floor area ratio with the bonus. So the applicant is proposing a floor area ratio of 1.0, which requires 100 bonus points. For building height, the base height is 30, and there's no bonus. But you can have projections above that, such as rooftop equipment, parapets, and applicant is proposing a two-foot parapet. Residential density is 20 units per acre, which would be five dwelling units at this site, and up to 35 units per acre with a bonus, which would be eight dwelling units at this site. The applicant is proposing approximately 26 units per acre for six dwelling units, and that requires 40 bonus points. Bonus points aren't added together. It's the largest amount of bonus points from a single category, so this project requires 100 bonus points as proposed. So for those 100 bonus points that are required, the applicant is proposing obtaining 50 of those bonus points by designing 100% of the units to be family-friendly, which is the maximum you can get for family-friendly, and 50% by contributing to the citywide fund to support small local serving businesses. And then, this project is fewer than 10 units, so affordable units are not required. For demolition of residential structure, there are required findings. And those are that all demolished units, pardon me, must be replaced, that the replacement structures are of design quality that's as high or higher than the demolished structures, and elimination of the residential structures would not be materially detrimental to the housing needs or the public interest of affected neighborhood or city. There's also conditional use permit findings that are required, that it's consistent with the general plan, that the location, size, coverage, et cetera, are compatible with the surrounding area, that it's consistent with the water supply and emergency response services, that the proposed use and proposed location will contribute to the well-being of the community, and that it's compliant with all applicable standards and requirements. And for design review, this project must conform to the design guidelines, as well as the North Hollis Area Urban Design Program. And its required findings are as consistent with the general plan and the urban design goals and policies of the city. Design of the project conforms to those design guidelines I just mentioned, and that the project is of a high design quality. So for project requirements for off-street parking, it's required, the permitted parking range is five to eight vehicular spaces. If you were to have fewer parking spaces than that or more parking spaces than that, that would require a separate conditional use permit, and seven bike parking spaces. The applicant is proposing six vehicular spaces, so within that permitted range, and eight bicycle parking spaces. For setbacks, there's required to be a 10-foot rear setback, and the applicant is proposing 20. And for the north hollows overlay, there's supposed to be 15 feet between the curb and the building, and applicant is right now proposing slightly over 18 feet between the curb and the face of building. For street trees and utility wires, for the conditions of approval, the staff is proposing that street trees be required for every 25 feet, as there is none in front of the project currently, and for the wires to be underground. And also, for the planning strip to be slightly wider than typical, about 3 1/2 feet, to provide for adequate root growth of those street trees. For open space, this project appears to be exceeding minimum requirements. There's private decks for each unit, and there's common open space in the back. The applicant hasn't provided specific calculations for all of those yet, but based on what's provided so far, it appears to exceed those requirements. For landscaping, 10% of the site area must be landscaped, which would be about 1,000 square feet on this property. And it also, again, appears to be consistent and provide that, but details haven't provided at this stage, as we're still in the study session phase. So here's a current site plan showing the existing structures to be demolished. And here's the proposed west elevation. So this is facing Doyle Street, and you can see the two buildings with a common driveway down the middle. And the squares towards the middle of the driveway, these are trash enclosures that are required to be accessible for pickup. They can't be at the rear of the property. They need to be able to be accessed directly from waste management. Here's a west elevation facing south, and then a west elevation, still on Doyle Street, facing north. So this would be a view from the rear of the property. So if you were the neighbor behind, if there were not trees and fence, this is what you would see. This is a north elevation, so what the neighbors from the north would see. The back of the property is on the left side of the screen, and the front of the property is on the right side of the screen. And this would be the south elevation for the south neighbors, so this time, that's flipped, of course. So the rear of the property is on your right side of the screen, and Doyle Street would be on your left side of your screen. So this is a view from the common driveways. There's two buildings that split up the middle. So this would be the elevation of the north building, if you were facing north, if you were standing between both buildings. And then, south, so if you just turned around 180 degrees, this is what you would see. So here's a landscaping plan. Unfortunately, on this shot, it's a little bit difficult to see. But we have here Doyle Street, towards the left, sidewalk, planting space between the building setback and the sidewalk. Towards the rear of the property, there's common open space proposed, and then some private open space behind the actual buildings, and some small patios along each side setback. The redwood tree is shown here, kind of a blue ice cream cone shape. And parking, which is a little bit difficult to see, would be on the ground floor of the front four units here, where my cursor is, in the middle. And the rear two units don't have parking beneath them. They need, at least one of those units needs to be accessible. So those have the parking in front of the units, so that you can have two accessible units as part of this property, or part of this proposed plan, pardon me. So here are the first-floor plans. It's a little bit hard to see, so I zoomed into just the south building, because the plans are reflective of each other. So the front unit has stairs and an entry from the main, from the main street. The middle unit has entry next to its garage here. And the rear unit has an entry in close proximity to where those rear parking spaces are provided. Moving on to the second floor. So again, this is the south building, but the north building is reflective of this plan. You go to common open space for the front two units and two bedrooms for the rear unit. And here we are on the third floor, and you have three bedrooms for the front two units, and two bedrooms and a rear deck for the rear unit. City staff did provide notification, 300-foot feet mailing and onsite notification board, as well as newspaper notification for this project. Staff requesting feedback from council this evening, and for the review of attachments and provide direction to applicant and staff. Questions at this point, or does the council have any comments regarding the overall design of the project, including building massing and articulation, unit design, landscaping, and preservation of existing trees? Is the council satisfied with having the proposed unit mix, 100%, two or more bedrooms, family-friendly units, and contributing to the citywide fund to support small local serving businesses to qualify for the 100 required community benefit points? Does the council believe that the required findings for the demolition of the residential structures can be made for this project? Does the council believe that required findings for a conditional use permit can be made for this project, specifically those related to compatibility with neighborhood character and contributing to the general well-being of the community? And does the council have any other concerns or comments about the project? I'm available for questions. The, Molly is here for any questions regarding the tree report, and the applicant would also like to present to the council.
Great. Why don't we bring the applicant up now, and if we have questions, we will address them after the applicant.
Thank you, Navarro. I actually don't have a whole lot to add. I'm Tom Dolan, the architect. I don't have a whole lot to add to what Navarro said. I will say that what, one thing that wasn't pointed out, if you go to the third-floor plan, now if you can go backwards in your, in your, in your display. But one of the things, the important things we did there is to step the building back so that the, the rear of the, the rear unit on each side is really two and a half stories. There's a, there's a step-down at the back, which is a gesture to the scale of the, of the buildings behind, which we wanted to do. I'd like to talk about the materials and color board. And I'm actually going to come around here, see if I can get the, the microphone to come around.
There's a different portable mic on the table.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's working?
Yep.
Okay. So basically, the materials, I don't know if you have the elevation in front of you, or Navarro, if you could make the elevation be in front of them.
Which elevation would you like?
Front elevation. Yeah, that's good. The colors aren't terribly accurate there, but that's what happens on a screen. So the, the dark color, which is on the right and the left of each, of each of the buildings, is a dark gray, smooth, wide plank of horizontal hardy board lap siding. And that's this material here. And then, the stucco below, the orange stucco kind of brightens and highlights the plinth of each building. The bays are engineered laminate wood, vertical wood siding, product called ProDema. And it lightens in contrast with the neutral vertical texture, highlighting the bays at each elevation face. That's this material here. And I can pass the materials board around if you want to feel the materials. Then the railings that you can see are what we call milk glass. It's a kind of a translucent glass, which we think will give a good balance of light and privacy at the outdoor deck areas. And then, the windows would be clear anodized aluminum, this material here. And the lower, sort of trash enclosure and the lower portion of the building, sort of towards the middle, is a material called EPE, which is a sustainably-produced and more or less rot-resistant wood. So just to summarize the design intent, specifically looking at the design, we have contrasting materials in part visually differentiating both vertical levels and horizontal unit divisions. The blurring of this pattern balances the project's greater cohesion and the individualization of each unit. Streetfront and muse landscape further break down the scale to provide a pedestrian and resident-friendly zone for incidental social occurrence. Rear and side yards respectively provide gathering zones of both public and private nature. Private decks constitute a further level of private open space. I'm happy to answer questions about the project. I think Navarro, as I said, introduced it quite well. And interested to hear questions, concerns, thoughts.
Any questions, clarifying questions for staff or the applicant? Jack?
With the removal of the roof deck, how high was that before? And how, how high is this now?
Well, the roof deck doesn't, the, the removal of the roof deck doesn't make the building lower. It just means that there won't be people up on the roof.
Right.
The roof's at 30 feet.
Okay.
What's the parapet? Where is that? Is that, that's not shown on here, right?
The parapet doesn't show on the, doesn't show up very well on the perspectives. But if you look on the, on the roof plan, you can see where it is. If you look on sheet A, A101, I don't know if, I don't know how to make these things. See if we can do that. A101. I don't know if I'm going in the wrong direction. There's, yeah, there's the roof, there's the roof plan. And you can see the parapets. I don't have a pointer, but.
Navarro, could you show the east elevation?
Oh, wait, wait. I'm not done with the, looking at the parapets. Can you, can you circle them on the overhead here?
Yeah, there's. Pardon me. There's also elevation that might help as well, so I'll show this.
I can't visualize this.
Is this what you're talking about here?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Give these to each council member.
Yes.
Now, those are parapets. And the front bay does not have a parapet.
Keep that before the meeting starts.
The front bay does not have a parapet. There, you can see the parapets in the section. Then you can see the front bay there does not have a parapet.
Are there any other clarifying questions for the applicant or staff?
Yeah, I'd like to see the east elevation, because that appears to be where we're getting most of the questions and slates from the neighborhood, from the neighbors to the east. And that height is 30 feet?
That height is 30 feet, although it steps back 10 feet. You can see where the railing is at the third-floor level. So the building actually is, is 20 feet, and then it steps back, and then it's 30 feet. So it's.
And where that railing is, is that a place where people can gather?
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a roof deck. That's very much a part of the, of the master suite of that unit.
Okay. I have a question for Navarro. You mentioned that, that this is high design quality. What exactly are the components of quote-quote "high design quality" in reference to this project?
Well, if I could just interject, I don't believe Navarro was asserting that it necessarily was high design quality. She was just saying that that is one of the findings that the council must make in approving the project. And that's a judgment call.
Well, where do they, we get the input for high design quality in this particular building?
I would say you reference the design guidelines, and it's, you know, it's really a subjective judgment on the part of the council to determine whether they believe this is high design quality or not.
See, Charlie, and Navarro, this brings up another question for me. I understand that it is the council's decision whether or not to demolish the existing houses. But to go on and make further findings and recommendations on the plan itself, what happens when this goes back to the Planning Commission, and someone has an objection to it and brings it back to the council? Will we have jeopardized our ability to make a judgment at that time because of the findings we're making now?
Well, you're not making any findings tonight. This is just a study session. But ultimately, the.
See where I'm going with that?
I think so. But ultimately, the entire project has to come to the city council for a decision. The use permit, the design review, everything about this project has to be approved by the city council. It's not just the demolition of the residential units. That's what triggers the council's jurisdiction here. But the council has to approve the whole thing. And that will be based on a recommendation from the Planning Commission. And I'm sure the Planning Commission will have lots of opinions about the design quality. And we will pass that along to you for, you know, you to consider when you make your decision.
Well, design quality is a big issue for me, and the impact both on the neighbors to the east and the impact on that, what's that architect?
Siegel and strain.
Siegel and strain, and particularly that magnificent redwood tree. So.
Right. Well, I would say, hopefully, you can rely on the goals and policies that are in the urban design element of the general plan, as well as the applicable guidelines that are in the Emeryville design guidelines. I mean, that's all about design quality. And if it complies with those, then, you know, one could argue that it is of a high design quality.
So, but staff would say this does comply with the guidelines?
We will go through the guidelines when we get to the approval stage.
We have not done that yet.
I don't believe we've gone through all of them at this point that meticulously, have we? No.
But when you come back to the decision point, that, those recommendations will be there.
Absolutely. Those are part of the findings.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question.
Go ahead.
It's, I noticed on the elevation, the, the angle of sun that would be coming down in the afternoon light, looks like the sunlight would be touching the top of the building, or is that a canopy that's sticking out that is opaque? Or is it translucent? What is above the deck on the second floor from the back? What is that material?
On the third floor, you mean?
Yes.
That's an opaque canopy, yeah.
Okay, so the angle of sunlight coming down represents about what time in the afternoon, say? When the sun is, you know, in other words, if someone were growing vegetables in that backyard, their own fence is going to have a certain angle of shadow. Or the six-foot fence there in the backyard. And the angle of light is similar to what the six-foot fence would have. You see where I'm going with this? Like what, you know, what effect would it have?
I'm not totally following.
What growing season or growing time?
In the backyard of this project or of neighbors?
Of the neighbor's project.
Well, we haven't done shadow studies, per se. I don't know if we'll be doing that as part of the design review or going back to the Planning Commission. But I can't exactly tell you the answer to that. But we can certainly do that.
Can I ask any further clarifying questions before we open this up?
Yes, can you just recap what the findings are that we need to find?
For the demolition, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sure. Go ahead.
So just to clarify for the, specifically for the demolition findings, that set of findings. So this is a brief summary, so this is not the full verbiage of the findings, but that all demolished units be replaced, that the replacement structures are designed of a quality as high or higher than the demolished structures.
Not a high bar.
And then, elimination of residential structures would not be materially detrimental to the housing needs or the public interest of affected neighborhood or the city. Again, this is paraphrased, so I could put it on one slide.
Elimination. Thank you. Any more clarifying questions?
How, okay, so if this is 30 feet in height, what's, what's the building closest to this parcel that is at that height? Is there, is there one nearby? I mean, we're, we're being asked about, you know, does it fit into the neighborhood and these kinds of things? And I, you know, I'm on Google Maps trying, trying to, to look at the streetscape, and I, I want to understand, you know, how it fits in with the rest of the neighborhood, because certainly, just looking at it separately, it doesn't look like it fits. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to reconcile this and understand where it is in terms of massing and height within the neighborhood.
If I could just tag on to that, one of the kind of visual jarring aspects for me too is, is not just the overall height, but that the building just to the south of it is kind of a traditional residential structure with a gabled roof. And here, we're just putting up another big, you know, boxy-looking residential structure like we've seen so many other places in town. And so, that doesn't really add or even maintain the character of the existing buildings anywhere on that block. It doesn't look like anything else on that block.
Oh, pardon me. I gotta, I have to have an objection here. If we look, if we look at that block, on the corner of Powell Street is a commercial building, then there's another architect's building next to that, then there's the townhouse, which we all dearly love. Then there's this lovely old vic or whatever it is, which is the one residential building on that, on that stretch. So I, I don't think your point's well-taken in terms of that it fits in with the character of the neighborhood. That block is a very mixed bag. And across the street, you have a commercial offices, and then down at the corner of Powell, you have the rental structures, no, the condos. So it's, it's not a traditional family neighborhood, I don't feel. If you really visualize that block in your mind, it's got everything in it. It's a mixed bag.
It's an eclectic street.
Yes. Very good word.
How, how high are the other residences, the condos, toward the end of the street, then?
They're.
I don't know the answer. We'll check on that.
They're at least 30.
I mean, I'm looking at them, but I.
It's true.
Scott?
Three stories, about same.
Yeah, they're at least 30.
You think?
Yeah.
I think, sure. But again, you know, it's a mixed bag. There's everything on that.
Yeah, but I mean, how much do we want to mix it? There's some internal consistency in terms of the, the brick and more traditional, and then.
And a gabled roof.
And a gabled, right.
I have a thing about gabled roofs. We're losing them.
Yeah, we are.
Well, you, you'd, you know, to force this design into the house next to it, that's the only house on the block.
Yeah, except that the, the whole street behind it is like that, is, is more traditional.
Well, I'm still on the street that we're looking in.
Yeah, but it's...
It's the neighborhood.
It's the block, it's the neighborhood.
I might also point out that the Berkeley Monthly Building is across the street.
Right.
And that there's kind of a change of character at this block. Actually, the Berkeley Monthly Building isn't that tall.
Right.
But it is very wide. I mean, it, it has a very large...
It runs.
...frontage. Yeah, so it, as council member Davis said, it's kind of a mixed bag on this street.
All right, if there are no more clarifying questions, I'm going to open this up to public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to comment on this project, please come forward at this time, you've got three minutes.
Hello, John Bouders, member of the planning commission. The proposal you reviewed tonight is not the proposal we reviewed in the last two study sessions, it's changed quite a bit, so I don't really want to provide you feedback on it because I haven't seen it in detail, but there was one thing that hasn't been asked in detail that I would ask you to consider talking about. Molly is here, and something we struggled with at the planning commission is there is a very large 50- to 80-year-old redwood tree that is very proximate to this property, and there are two ways to build the north of the two rows of townhomes here. One is to put in a foundation that, if you listen to the arborist expert, not me, will let you know would jeopardize the core root bed for this tree and put it in jeopardy. The alternative is to do a foundation that's like a mat foundation on top of the surface of the property, but it may ultimately result in them losing one story. We asked them to be more creative with that to balance the issue between the height of the building and the neighborhood and the need to preserve the tree, but I would really implore you to ask more questions about the tree tonight. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Yes. So, I guess I need to once again remind you that the old, the new city council, I'm sorry, the new general plan makes provisions to make sure that this kind of thing doesn't happen, and what, and how it does that is identifies this neighborhood as a quote "zone of stability," and stability there, by the use of the word stability, they're using that in the traditional dictionary parlance, meaning we don't do this. The old general, before this general plan was written, we had lots of developers licking their chops at, especially North Emeryville, but also the Triangle neighborhood, wanting to buy properties and then turn single-family residences into fourplexes, sixplexes, and what have you, maximizing their profit. And we collectively decided we don't want to do that anymore, and so we wrote this new general plan, which identifies North Emeryville as a zone of stability, so expressly to address this sort of thing. So, I think you should, I mean, I think the general plan has value, and you should acknowledge the general plan. Just a minor note, the developer made reference to EPE being sustainably harvested wood. You should ask him, says who? Because it is not, it's, you can trust that it's sustainably harvested as much as you can trust how well the government of Brazil has managed its forests. But most importantly, what I want to talk about here is, I want to back what council member Davis, her misgivings about this project. They don't, it doesn't seem like a very well-designed project to Ms. Davis, and I'd like to agree with that. It's, in matter of fact, it's horribly ugly, and it's, you know, it's a box, it has this kind of ugly layered pastiche, it looks like a sophomore design project, and then once again, we have Ms. Davis saying, what are the design criteria? It's her gut telling her it's not well-designed, but then we have Mr. Bryant reminding everybody that, that aesthetics are, there's no objectivity in aesthetics, it's all subjective, and I'm here to tell you right now that that's patently false, and to those that would doubt that, you just have to ask yourself, how could, if it's all subjective, if design is a subjective in art and aesthetics, how could we have museums? In fact, no, it's not subjective. There is objectivity in, in design and art, there is such a thing as good design, and it can be actually quantified, and I know this because I have a degree in it from an accredited university, so it's not like I came to school every morning and the professor said, okay, you can all leave because there's nothing teacher, it's all subjective. It's not the way it works out.
Thank you.
It's, I think you should listen to Ms. Davis.
Hello, I'm Ken Lukowski, current resident, been there 37 years. The structures need to be replaced, there's a lot of wear and tear there, it would cost probably more to rehabilitate them than it would to fix them. The other thing about that redwood tree is, you know, there's an awful lot of leaves that come down from that thing every day. I mean, I have to constantly clean up lots of leaves, and they're dry, and I really think the supply hazard it. I mean, and that tree's not 80 years old, that tree, you wouldn't believe how quick those things grow. I mean, I remember when I first moved there, it was kind of small, and it has grown to huge proportion and continues to grow that large. So at some point, you have to contain some of these trees. It's on private property, it's really not a public tree, so, anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, with that, we are going to come back to discussion and address the questions that were posed by staff, first of which, actually, Navarre, could you pull them up so the public can see them as well? Does the council have any comments regarding the overall design of the project, including building massing, articulation, unit design, landscaping, and preservation of existing trees? So I would personally like to hear from the arborist about the tree in the back, if you don't mind.
All right. Hi, everyone. So it's quite a large redwood tree, it has two stems, one is 49.5 inches and one is 40 inches, and when you put those trees together, they have a cross-sectional area of about 64 inches, and so that would make, when we talk about tree root protection, that would make the tree protection zone to be 64 feet out from the base of the tree, and that's where usually when construction happens, that area is going to be strictly looked over and encroachment enforced by the arborist, because that's where the critical roots are. There's another term that we like to use, the primary root plate, and that's basically three diameters out from the base of the tree, and that's basically where if you cut roots within that zone, you can risk tree destabilization, and that is 16 feet out from the base of the tree, and I believe that we are going to be within the primary root plate of the tree, of the tree with this project. So it's a healthy tree. My father and I did some preliminary root investigation. It was very hard to look at the area because it's covered in pavement, but the area that was open, we looked at it, and there was a lot of fibrous roots there. We don't know where the roots are, and so when the pavement comes up, that's a good opportunity to go and figure out what's going on, and if there are surface roots, if there are deep roots, so more investigation needs to be done about, about the root presence. So...
How tall is the tree moment?
You know, I didn't...
I'm just curious.
I didn't, I didn't get that information, but it's definitely pretty, pretty large. It's over, it's over 30 feet tall.
And can you state again, the tree root protection zone is how wide?
Sure. It's the tree root protection zone, it's going to be 64 feet out from the base of the tree, and so that's really, you know, when construction happens, we really need to protect that area. It's not to say that that work is not done in that area, of course it can be, but, you know, you have to need, you need to enforce strict arborist supervision to make sure that roots, when they're cut, they're cut cleanly, they're not ripped.
Right.
Another thing that we, we want to see is the pier on grade beam foundation in the area where the roots are present, if they are present there, we're, I'm assuming right now that there's going to be a lot of roots there. When we do the investigation, we can, we can have a look and see, but if we just go and cut a trench along that area, that's going to cut about, oh, about like 25% of the, of the roots on that tree. So, so we suggest the use of pier on grade beam foundation where design would allow the piers to move one way or the other if we do encounter some significant roots.
Navarre, can we look at the top-down while we're having this conversation? Thank you. And I just wanted to go through this number-one question from staff, with the council, does the council have any comments regarding the overall design and, including building massing, articulation, unit design, landscaping, and preservation of existing trees? So I, based on the comments from our arborist, I would propose that the applicant move forward with at least investigating the most conservative treatment of this tree.
I support that, absolutely, yeah.
So if I could understand your report, the foundation would have piers instead of a grade beam, and then the slab would span between the piers, is that, is that what you're suggesting?
Right, so, so the foundation would be sitting on piers, so that, that you're not just cutting a huge trench and cutting all the roots on that one side of the tree.
Okay.
And if we do encounter roots, we can move the piers, the holes one way or the other to sort of compensate for, for what we find.
So Diane, is it fair to say, I think all the council's in on this, that we really want the planning commission to see that the applicant goes forward with reasonable measures to preserve that tree? Are we all agreed on that?
Yes.
Moving along.
Okay, is there anything else encapsulated in number one? Because I heard some strong opinions on design.
Yeah, I think the building massing is out of character.
I would suggest that we send a strong message to the planning commission that we really want them to look at the quality of the design. We don't have many more opportunities left to, to do something like this, let's do this the very best we can.
Yeah, I would say that for me, I'm a proponent of density and more housing for folks, and the, the middle ground for me is, is working with the neighborhood, and if the massing feels appropriate to the surrounding folks, then I would be on board with, you know, getting the density that we can out of this project. I, I worked right across the street from here, so I am familiar with the street, and I, it's, it's not very residential, and I, you know, I, it's, it's extremely mixed. Nora, you hit the nail right on the head with the series of buildings in a row. They're all very different, and I think we could afford to go up, but, you know, I would want to honor the feeling of the neighbors, and so I'd want to hear from them, so that's the, the direction that I would give the planning commission.
I feel it's very, 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 very boxy.
Yeah.
And that, and it feels, at least from what I'm seeing, imposing, kind of uninteresting. I think even the condos at the end of the street have a little bit more articulation and interest...
You're right.
...to them. So I, I think it needs further work, certainly, and I also want to, you know, say to the public, but also in communicating back to the planning commission, that the design and materials are of high quality, that, that's really important to me as well. That said, I'm, I was glad to see the contribution to the small local-serving businesses, and then also...
Let's stick to number one. Let's stick to number one, and we'll go down the line.
So I want to concur with what Jack said about it being too boxy, and I was happy in terms of the material choices. I don't think we have to have such a patchwork of a skin on, on a building, so I like hardy board lapped siding, and we could have some, to me, it would look less patchwork if the whole skin were lapped siding and not stucco and this and that, and trying to, you know, it just looks like a patchwork quilt to me, it doesn't look like it hangs together with any kind of integrity, and I think to actually simplify the skin of the building would help, would go a long way to making it feel like it fits the rest of the, of the block. Okay, Scott?
Well, I, I don't think that having it look uniform would necessarily help it out. The material divisions, when I look at it, help break it up. I mean, this, what's impressive to me is how much square footage the, this design gets out of the site with all of the constraints of parking cars and having enough outdoor space, so it's, it's kind of a, you know, an efficiency to the site model of like, what is the maximum efficiency you could do? I'm, you know, I think the setback from the, to the east for those neighbors is pretty good, actually, so, you know, I'm, for the purposes of the, you know, the minimum requirement for demolition, I think we're there. The, I don't know if it's our place necessarily to talk about quality right now necessarily.
Well, we can, we can drop that message to planning commission.
Yeah, I think that the planning commission could go over the design details in more depth, but for me, I, I think it meets the minimum requirements to proceed on. It gives certainly much higher quality housing than, that's at that site. The neighborhood really is a mixture of things, it's partly residential, partly commercial, so, I don't know, seems acceptable.
So, you know, we kind of got a mishmash of answers there for my number-one, I'm wondering if staff would like to echo anything back to, to, or do you feel like you could deliver all of those comments to planning commission? I'm hap, we're happy to address it now, if you want to...
We got it, I mean, you're concerned about the tree, we understand that, and I'm, I'm hearing kind of mixed messages about the design. On the one hand, it's high density, which is good, it's an eclectic neighborhood, so fitting in is kind of a open question. On the other hand, just looking at it as a standalone building, I'm hearing some of you say you think it's kind of boxy and maybe not appropriate, so I'm hearing, like I said, mixed reviews on the design, and we can pass that to the commission.
Yeah.
Is that...
Okay.
You heard Navarre.
Okay, and moving on to number two, is the council satisfied with having the proposed unit mix? 100%, two or more bedroom, family-friendly units, and contributing to the citywide fund to support small local-serving businesses to qualify for the 100% 100 required community benefit bonus points? I'm fine with this.
I'm very satisfied with that, but I want to know how much money they're going to be contributing to the small business fund.
Well, it would be...
Ballpark, ballpark.
Oh, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but it would be 5% of construction valuation.
Very good, that's the number I wanted.
I just want to clarify that it's three bedrooms...
Yes.
...in all the units, so not, not just two or more, it is three bedrooms, right?
Right, the bonus is for two or more bedrooms, but in this case, it's three bedrooms for all, correct?
Okay, and then the real reason why we're all here tonight is number three, does the council believe that the required findings for the demolition of residential structures can be made for this project?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, although I think also talking about design is really, really important, and it, it feels a little bit kind of soft and fuzzy and like a hope.
Yeah.
Right, in terms of the B finding at the, under the demolition section of the staff report, I mean, the fact that its new materials might say that it's higher quality, but I don't know about the design quality that's as high or higher, the way that it's written. Just to have something new that's in better shape could be a benefit, but...
Yeah.
But we, I can't really weigh in about the design quality that's as high or higher, so I, I don't feel comfortable with B finding, and I feel fine with A and C.
All right.
And I also feel like, you know, there's, there's two illegal units and four legal units, and so total of six, so the fact that there's, we would end up with six all larger units, I think potentially could be a benefit to the city, but, you know, the devil's in the details here.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to number four, does the council believe that the required findings for a conditional... Do you have a slide for these findings, Navar? Of course.
It was back.
There we go.
Okay.
And again, these are paraphrased.
Right.
I say yes on it.
I'm fine with all but, except the second bullet, which I'm not sure is, fits.
It's hard to be compatible with an eclectic neighbor.
Yes, right, I'm, I am fine with this.
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right, are there any other concerns or comments about this project that we haven't conveyed this evening?
It sounds to me like design is the big thing.
Yeah, I would just like to point out that if we go back and look at the three-quarter views of this project from the street, like you, you won't see, it won't appear like the, the overall front view unless you're on the roof of the Berkeley Monthly Building. So, the, the real look of this is if you look at the three-quarter views, yeah, that view, that's what you'll see, and then from the other direction, that's, that's the look of it. I think that's how it would really feel in that neighborhood, those, those two views. The front-on view is not so much, you'd have to be on the sidewalk and still, even then, you're...
All right, no further comment, no questions from staff? You feel like you have what you need?
I think we have direction.
Okay, very good.
Unanimity.
Okay, we are joining this study session. Very quickly, we're moving on to the blue...